Good afternoon. I'm Steve Smith, Chairman of the Board of Trust at Middle Tennessee State University, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. As is a tradition with our board, we're going to start with a Pledge of Allegiance and ask distinguished General Huber to introduce our student veteran of this quarter. So let's do our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chairman Smith, President McPhee, board members, leadership of this incredible university, it is my privilege today to introduce U.S. Army veteran Brian Galaz. One of six children, mother immigrated from the Army, two sisters, one currently serving in the Navy. Brian enlisted in the U.S. Army at the age of 17 immediately upon graduating from high school. He served in the most difficult position the Army offers, the basic infantryman. He deployed to combat in Afghanistan with the 101st Airborne Division air assault in 2016 to 2017. He will be a junior here at MTSU, majoring in economics. His goal, his dream, his vision is to be involved in international finance. Ladies and gentlemen, Brian Galaz.
Hi. I'm honored to be here and thank you for all the kind words, bit gracious with me. So I chose to come to MTSU because I admired the economics program after I got out of the Army. I actually was stationed at Fort Campbell for three years, so I wasn't far off. And when I was looking at colleges to go to, I toured, you know, many colleges, UTs, et cetera. And I made the decision to come to MTSU because I was impressed with the economics program. So I took the chance and I came and I haven't been disappointed. But what made my experience at MTSU was my time spent at the Daniel Center. They've always been there for me and I have so many memories of just times where they've supported me and helped me in my journey and make me feel welcome to the university. I don't want to, I want to address the fact that Tennessee has been a very welcoming state, but I know it can be difficult for military members transitioning out, seeking a higher level education. And I'm glad that I had the Daniel Center and I'm sorry if there are universities out there that don't have it, but thankfully this one does. And I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Miller for supporting me, especially recently with my desire to intern for the Federal Reserve Board. And that's about all I have to say about the experience. And have a happy new year and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll spare you my opening remarks, except welcome and thank you. Ms. President, do you have a remarks?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Well, Ms. Zimmerman, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Boyd. Trustee Delay.
Here.
Trustee Freeman.
Here.
Trustee Jacobs.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Karbowiak.
Here.
Trustee Karbowiak, since you are participating electronically, I need to ask you those two questions, whether you can hear everyone in the room clearly and are you alone at your location?
Yes, I am alone and yes, I can hear you very clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Smith.
Here.
Trustee Wright.
Here.
And Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum, but I would like to ask if there is anyone else calling in on the line.
Yes, Mr. Alan Thomas.
Thank you.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Vice President Thomas.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Now it's time to look at over our minutes and need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we have two sets of minutes. We have the minutes from the September 15th meeting and the October 20th special call meeting. Was that motion to approve both sets or?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And who made the motion and seconded, please?
Daryl Freeman.
Pete Delay.
Thank you.
I know it's hard to tell who's talking.
Any discussion? All in favor?
We need a voice vote, your, your, sir.
... of expedited tenure. The university sometimes finds it necessary to expedite tenure review in order to recruit high-quality faculty for administrative positions. Departmental input regarding tenure for an administrator is necessary since tenure is awarded in a specific department, Policy 204-Tenure, Section 7. Dr. Trey Martindale, the new chief online learning officer and faculty member in university studies, has been reviewed for tenure by his department chair, department committee, and college dean according to MTSU Policy 204, tenure and the respective college and department policies. The president and university provost recommended that tenure be granted effective December 8, 2020, and the committee approved the recommendation. Provost Burns also presented information relative to a new policy, 204A, tenure policy amendment. This policy provides tenure-track faculty with an additional stop-the-clock opportunity to address the interruption in their progress towards tenure caused by COVID-19. This action item was also approved. The next item Provost Burns brought before the committee was approval of policy revisions 206, tenure and promotion appeals. Proposed revisions including separating and expanding nature of an appeal, Section 4, and procedure for an appeal, Section 5, as well as streamlining language and replacing paper copies with scanned copies to be transmitted electronically. And the final action item before the group was an update presentation of MTSU's COVID, MTSU campus COVID-19 response. President McPhee, along with representatives from MTSU Student Health Services and Athletics, briefly outlined plans and actions that had been taken beginning in January through the time of this meeting in order to prevent, in order to manage the virus on our campus. The committee voted unanimously to acknowledge, to commend, to support, and endorse the administration's actions and responses to COVID-19. Several informational items were also presented to this committee last month, which included updates on performance metrics, athletics, and diversity efforts. And Mr. Chairman and trustees, as I stated earlier, I'm pleased to report that all action items were approved unanimously by the committee. So materials, these materials regarding these actions were made available to you prior to our meeting, they're in your board notebooks, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're blessed to have you as chairman.
Oh, thank you.
I need a motion to approve the actions of the academic affairs student life.
So moved, Pete Delay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Sorry, got to have a roll call vote.
And who seconded, please, the motion?
I think I did.
Daryl did.
Daryl.
Did I have you one, Daryl two?
All right. Trustee Baker.
Yes.
Trustee Delay.
Approved.
Trustee Freeman.
Approved.
Trustee Jacobs.
Approved.
Trustee Martin.
Approved.
Trustee Karbowiak.
Approved.
Chairman Smith.
Approved.
Trustee Wright.
Approved.
Eight aye votes.
Mr. Chairman.
Unanimously passed. Mr. Freeman, ask for a minute or two, three, whatever you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Wright, thank you for the report on academic affairs. And last meeting, we did have a conversation about diversity on the campus that was very lively. In our previous two meetings, we've talked about diversity. And looking at the data that Dr. McPhee has provided me, it seems to me that the African-American males are graduating at a very, very low percentage, which somewhat bothered me because obviously I came to school here as a poor African-American male and had some success and it changed my life. And so when I left that meeting, I contacted the governor's office with a text to say, hey, I think we got a problem. It may be across the state. I'm willing to help start a statewide initiative and I'm willing to use my own money and my own resources to kick it off. And subsequently talked to the TBR chairperson, Emily Reynolds. I called her and she said, you know, Daryl, this, we're seeing this problem across the state at all of our community colleges. It's really, really bad with African-American males. I think they, I think 1,300 African-American males have dropped out of the system in the last year. And she said, whatever you, if you're going to start an initiative, we want to be a part of that initiative. But she suggested that I reach out to Mike Kraus, who is the head of T-HAC. So I reached out to Mike Kraus and long story short, he poured the data and his text back to me was, as it relates to African-American males graduating at the universities, his text back to me was, I am devastated. That he was devastated at the graduation rate across the system. And so he and I decided that we'd work together on an, on an initiative to help improve graduation rates. He immediately on that call assigned a staff member to this effort because he felt that if he didn't assign a staff member to the effort, that the work may not get done. And so then he also, we also came up with a plan. So we, he and I have been talking every day for the probably the last 10 days about this effort. And so what we've decided to do, we're going to meet several times over the next several weeks to come up with a plan. We're going to visit two, at least one, we're talking to one university tomorrow who's done a good job in the area of African-American graduation rates. And so, and also in addition to talking to Mike Kraus, I've talked to several T-HAC board members who are all on board. And so it seems like we may have a chance at getting an initiative to address this problem. And Dr. McPhee and board, I hope that we all can work together on it to, to make a difference in the lives of the young men that come to school here because we really need to do something to help them to graduate and to live that American dream. And so that when we say that Pledge of Allegiance is for everybody. And so I'm thankful to Mike Kraus. It was refreshing for him to say, hey, we got to call this out. We've got to do something about this. And he immediately went to work and he didn't do any, well, Tennessee compared to Mississippi or Tennessee compared to Kentucky. He just said, hey, this is a problem. We got to address it. So I'm, again, I'm hopeful that my alma mater will, will join in and be a part of the effort.
Thanks for your generosity, Vice Chairman Freeman. Next is the Audit Committee and Compliance Committee and Trustee Delay.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Audit and Compliance Committee met on November 10, 2020. The committee approved the minutes from its August 18, 2020 meeting. There were no action items before the committee. Dr. McPhee, at this time, I would like to ask you to follow up on a conversation we had in a previous meeting on the resources available for our audit and compliance responsibilities.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Delay. First, let me just give a brief history of the Office of Compliance and Enterprise Resource Management, along with some budgetary actions and information. This office reports to our Vice President for Business and Finance. The office was created in January of 2017 with an initial budget of $115,000. In FY year 1718, funding for a part-time position was provided by the Vice President's office and amounted to about $35,000 annually. In December 2019, the Board of Trustees approved Policy 90, Athletic Integrity and Conduct of Athletics Staff, which required the university to have an investigator on staff for the cases brought forward by student athletes to support our student athletes. This position, along with funding of $50,000 plus benefits, was added to the department. In FY 1920, an additional $25,000 in base funding was provided to the office for travel and operating expenses. An office suite was created for this department in 2019, which consists of 837 square feet of space to house the staff. In 2020, the office began using the services of a student worker to assist with routine office duties. Now, recruiting for the athletic investigator position was initially put on hold due to the pandemic and budget concerns. However, I approve an exception to proceed with filling this position shortly after we received information from the state regarding our budget. And so recruiting is underway to fill that position. The office is also currently looking for a person, a staff person, to fill part-time position. The current budget for the department is $243,758, inclusive of salary, benefits, travel, and operating. In closing, I would like to say that MTSU was the first LGI to create such an office, this office. After we created it, several of our sister institutions followed us. It provides a hub for compliance activities across the campus. And I just want the trustees to know that even though we are dealing with very tight budgets, we know that the compliance and integrity of the university is a priority and therefore we have allocated very limited dollars that the university has for the operation of this office. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Dr. McPhee. And thank you for making it clear to our board that we do have the necessary resources available to do a good job in this area. If additional resources become necessary in the future, we're confident that you'll address that eventuality at the appropriate time.
Yes, sir.
Two informational items were presented by Brenda Burkhart, our Chief Audit Executive. First, the results of an external audit. The Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, Office of Criminal Justice Programs, conducted an onsite monitoring review of a VOCA contract for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. VOCA is an anagram for Victim of Criminal Act. There were no findings of noncompliance. And the second informational item was a quarterly review of the two internal audit reports. First, an audit of inventories for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020 was concluded, which concluded that inventory counts were accurate and in compliance with inventory procedures. There were no reportable issues. Second, review of the use of the MTSU Mobile Production Lab for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020 concluded the risk of personal use was minimal and the procedures for managing the use of this asset were adequate. The report contained no findings or recommendations. The public meeting of the committee adjourned and the committee went into executive session to discuss audits and investigations. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Delay. Next is the distinguished Chairman Joey Jacobs Committee for Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on November 10, 2020. The committee approved the minutes from its August 18, 2020 meeting. There was one action item from the November committee meeting that require, that require approval by the board. The Board of Trustees are charged with approving the operating budgets and setting the fiscal policies for Middle Tennessee State University. As required by T-HAC, one of the three budgets submitted by the university annually is an October revised budget. Mr. Alan Thomas, Vice President for Business and Finance, presented the changes made to the budget since the original July budget was approved. The committee approved the recommended, recommended changes. Informational items brought before the committee included T-HAC 2021-22 capital outlay maintenance recommendations, T-HAC's 2021-22 operating recommendations, and a philanthropy report. Mr. Chairman and trustees, as stated earlier, I am pleased to report that the only action item was approved unanimously by the committee. Materials outlining these actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Joey. We need a motion to approve the action.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Trustee Freeman with the motion?
Trustee Freeman.
And Trustee Baker with the second? Thank you. Shall I take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Thank you. Trustee Baker.
Approved.
Trustee Delay.
Approved.
Trustee Freeman.
Approved.
Trustee Jacobs.
Approved.
Trustee Martin.
Approved.
Trustee Karbowiak.
Approved.
Chairman Smith.
Approved.
Trustee Wright.
Approved.
Eight, zero.
Now I'd like for you to review the meeting dates for 2021. There's been one small change in December. And after reviewing those, if I could get a motion, we can move on.
Approved.
Mr. Baker makes a motion to approve the meeting?
Second. Delay?
Mr. Delay is a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we better have a roll call on this, too.
You don't necessarily need a vote, but since you've made the motion, let's, let's close this up.
Carry it out. Go ahead.
Trustee Baker.
Yes.
Trustee Delay.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobs.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Karbowiak.
Yes.
Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Wright.
Yes.
Eight ayes.
It's unanimous. And now, Madam Secretary, do you have a secretary's report?
Just a very brief one. Mr. Chairman, on page 157, you will see that there were two minor edits to two separate policies to reflect the change of a title to an employee, a position here on, on campus. And I would like to ask the chairman for Joe Bales to come forward. I understand that Mr. Bales, our Vice President, would like to make a special presentation.
Is he about to give us money?
No, no question.
That would be a surprise.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for this unscripted and unscheduled presentation. One of the great things about this institution that we've long noted is the incredible support that we get philanthropically from our institutional leadership. And we take great pride in the fact that our leaders not only talk about the importance of giving, they lead by example. And in this season of giving, we thought it was especially appropriate that we recognize that leadership in action. The MTSU Foundation created the Signal Society to recognize those donors who have sustained their commitment to the university through continuous years of giving. And today, we would like to honor and recognize one of our leaders, some of our leaders for the incredible support they provided. When he became president of the university 20 years ago, Dr. McPhee, one of the first things he did was begin a regular contribution to the institution. Annually, he provides support for a number of programs and activities across our campus. And today, I would like to thank him and his wife for their 20 years of continuous support for the university. Dr. McPhee?
I got new face masks. I don't think they like my cloth face mask.
Dr. McPhee's not the only one that does that, though. This board has representation in this group as well. With 25 years of giving, Trustee Jacobs has provided 25 years of continuous giving to the, to the university. And last but not least, certainly, oh, three years ago, we recognized our first 50-year donors. That's an amazing accomplishment, no matter what campus you're on. And we have one of our trustees who will be nearing that mark very soon. But with 40 years of continuous giving, our chairman, Mr. Steve Smith and his wife, Denise.
Oh, your money, babe. Have more. That's right.
Does that conclude your report, Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, Mr. President, now's a good time for your remarks. If you'd like to have some.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, good afternoon, members of the board. As always, I really do appreciate the opportunity to provide this report to you. And I'd like to share just a few updates of our recent actions and activities and some of our challenges at our university since our last trustee meeting. Let me start with an area that you all are very much involved in and like to be kept updated, our enrollment, recruitment, and our academic programs. I'm pleased to report that we will host, for the first time, a winter session for students interested in completing an online course during the holiday break. And this is consistent with all the efforts we are making to help students, move students quickly through their degree programs and to graduate. And I must give credit to the provost and his staff and Student Affairs, our registrar's office, for pulling this off. About 50 winter session courses will be offered, starting December 21st and ending January 21st, 2021. As of November 30th, there were more than 1,000 students enrolled in the inaugural winter session. And I'm pleased to say that the enrollment for the upcoming year, January this spring, continues to look about even compared with last year. Again, amazing with the pandemic, with all the issues concerning students coming to an institution, for us to be holding our own for the spring semester is commendable. Now, throughout this past fall, we maintain a active calendar, a robust calendar of online and socially-distanced new student recruiting events. We turn our attention to the fall of 2021. More than 675 students and families logged into one of our online True Blue Tour events. If you recall, we travel around the state and really around the region, but because of the pandemic, we weren't able to do that this year. But that didn't stop our recruiting office. We had an online Blue, True Blue Tour events. And our recruiters have also been very busy working with students through more than 300 online information sessions and 150 virtual college fairs and high school visits. Again, I'm pleased to report that the prospective students and their families, interesting, are still interested in visiting our campus. To accommodate their requests, we To accommodate their requests, we provided campus tours for more than 1,250 prospective students and family members since the beginning of September. I want to point out and give compliments to the College of Basic and Applied Sciences under the leadership of our dean. That college had 37 prospective students visit for a two-special Saturday events focused on the sciences. And that was quite successful. Now, not so good news here. Unfortunately, despite these efforts, and as it is true for across the country, for fall of 2021, both freshman and transfer application admits for the 2021 semester academic year are down significantly. Now, although in previous years, we have held to a very strict December 1 freshman scholarship deadline, this year, we will be working throughout the full month of December to qualify students for scholarship. In January of 2021, we will begin awarding additional guaranteed scholarship to students who make late decisions to apply. Again, in the spring term and throughout the summer of 2021, we will continue to focus on providing on-campus tour experiences, obviously socially-distanced, and efforts to mitigate. And we do have a calendar of online live events where prospective students can chat with admissions staff and academic advisors. And for the fall, this coming fall, we are planning for a hybrid model of customs orientation for summer with some content provided online and shorter on-campus experience for students and their families. I wanted to share those activities with you to let you know that even though we have the constraints of the pandemic and all of the challenges and difficulties, we have our staff, they are being innovative. And frankly, it's one of the reasons why we were the, in the LGI, the only institution that had a significant increase in enrollment this fall. The challenge is going to even be much greater for fall of 2021. But we are not sitting back waiting to see what happens to us. We're making every effort to kind of control our destiny. Now, a COVID-19 update. I'm so pleased that we successfully concluded our in-person on-campus classes on November 25th, the day before Thanksgiving. It was a real tough decision and was a high-risk decision that we all made. But we just didn't make it without preparing for the eventualities. And to say that we have been able to complete this semester with such an enrollment is really a compliment again to our faculty, our staff, and those administrators that have worked for this. I'm also pleased that we are very fortunate to experience no hospitalization of our students.
None?
None. 22,000-plus students that were, where particularly the ones that are in our residence hall.
That's great news.
So I want to share with you just a few statistics from this fall semester as we work towards making this a safe and healthy campus. Our Student Health Services staff have worked about 500 hours of overtime. Student Health Services staff administered 2,402 COVID tests. And our health center has issued 231 self-test kits. Our Counseling Services has offered a weekly pandemic support group for our students. Our housing operation has placed 240 residential students in isolation quarantine space. Just to give you a context, one of our state institution by, I think, the end of August or September had 2,400 in quarantine and isolation. Now, for our students that are in isolation, each student, we have coordinated delivery of three meals plus snacks every day throughout their stay. An airmark catering operation has provided almost 3,500 meals. That's breakfast, lunch, and dinner for isolated quarantined students on our campus during the fall semester. Our housing operation sends out a daily dose of inspiration, i.e. email and a video of a quote "campus celebrity." Joe, are you that campus celebrity? To our students that in quarantine and isolation to let them know that they are not forgotten and that they are missed. These are the extra efforts that our staff have implemented and have done to make this a very challenging time for our university, one where our students can thrive and survive. And in two days, this week, final exams for the semester will be completed. And as you know, we did not return students after Thanksgiving and our finals are online and remote. So in two days, the whole operation will cease. Those are the good news. Not everything went perfect. And so I want to share with you some challenges and some lessons learned this semester. We initially made the decision to designate every room in our on-campus housing for single occupancy. The assumption was that we would do so at the standard single occupancy rate, which is a bit higher than the standard double rates. However, we got immediate feedback from our students and their parents that that additional cost would prove to be a barrier for many of them, especially our low-income students. So what we did, we reversed. Within 48 hours, we announced that we would move fully to single occupancy room, but without no additional charges. That caused our housing operation millions of dollars. We have based our computing, another lesson learned, mostly prior to the pandemic, on desktop technology. Since COVID-19, we have begun to recommend that all of our computer replacements in student affairs, as well as other divisions, they are transitioning to laptops and docking station. Why? This allows staff to be able to work from home, either due to quarantine or isolation or if we are closed due to inclement weather. Mr. Chairman, members of our board, we also learned that even though most of our students grew up using technology, that does not mean they are all comfortable using it for remote class work or necessarily knowledgeable about how various software works. In retrospect, we should have given them more training and opportunities much earlier in anticipating such a crisis. And in hindsight, we could have more clearly defined the differences in course delivery modes for the fall 2020 semester, especially regarding remote delivery courses. Now, I think we've done with the provost's leadership a much better job of explaining for this upcoming semester, the spring, explain to both students and faculty what the expectations are between remote, online, and in-person classes. We got a lot of feedback and some concerns from students who signed up and didn't quite realize or didn't have the clarification of the differences between. And so that created some dissatisfaction among students. And the provost has done a good job clearing that up with the faculty. Also, on the technology end, technology has opened a new way to conduct learning experience. But not everyone has the access to the technology that they need. And we were aware of this as we offered free loan program for internet and laptops for our students. The lesson learned is that I think the inequality will continue. And COVID or not, it is something for us to focus on in the future. However, we did a reasonably good job in getting information out about the availability of those technology for those who didn't have it. But we also, in retrospect, we provided too much information to our students and sometime it overwhelmed them. So there's so much going on in our student lives that all this information, all at once, is like taking a sip of water from a fire hose. So we have really learned how to space out our communication to our students. Again, I cannot stress publicly how important and the incredible work our faculty, our staff, our executive team, what they did for us to be able to complete this semester. I had mentioned to you several, some of you several times, that if anyone had told me in May, June, or July, one, that we would have an increase in our enrollment, and two, that we would complete the semester without any major cluster problems, I would tell them they didn't know what they were talking about. But with the quality of the people that we have working at this university and particularly our healthcare folks and the health sciences, under the leadership of Dr. Eric Clark, you met him at our last meeting, committee meeting, and Rick Chapman, and the nurses that have spent long hours on weekends helping to ensure that the campus was safe and healthy for our students and employees during the fall semester. And I personally want to thank this board for entrusting the administration to make the appropriate day-to-day decisions, timely operational decisions regarding COVID-19 on our campus. We are certainly not out of the woodworks. And we do know that there are going to be greater challenges, greater challenges this spring as we continue to deal with this pandemic. But the good news is, as I've heard many have said in the last week or two, help is on the way. Hopefully, this vaccine will, by the spring semester, provide the kind of support that it will allow us to get back to somewhat of normal and begin to bring our students back on the campus. But I didn't want this meeting to end without this board knowing what it really meant to have your support with my executive team, the faculty, because we had to make some very, very tough decisions. So I want to thank you personally. Now, on graduation, on Saturday, November 21st, we held three historic ceremonies honoring more than 1,700 December 2020 graduates, as well as almost 400 May and August graduates who wanted to experience an in-person celebration after their commencement for spring and summer were canceled and were moved to virtual. These ceremonies were held on a beautiful day. We were absolutely blessed and fortunate to have an incredible day in Floyd Stadium. And we did it under very strict social distancing and health protocols because of COVID-19 pandemic. It was the first such ceremony in Floyd Stadium since 1972. And by most accounts, very successful and much appreciated by our graduates and their families. And I want to share with you one of the many gratitudes that, and cards that the university, my office, received from family members. And it really speaks to the type of students, the demographics that we have. And if you look at the screen, that's a, I got this in the mail from a family that wrote and said, "Thank you." And I just want to read you this. Send a picture. It says, "Dear Dr. McPhee, just a note to thank you for such a great graduation event on November 21st. Our youngest son had the honor of attending and graduating from Middle Tennessee State University. And we are so proud of him for taking the challenge of raising a family full-time, working full-time, and attend to his family full-time. And now he's beginning, a new beginning for his family, his wife Fallon, his daughters Zoe and Gwen, and his son, soon to be coming, Finn. Wishing you a Merry Christmas." Students full-time working, full-time raising a family, and yet going to school full-time. And it was important for us as a university to give the opportunity to those families to be able to celebrate such an incredible experience as graduation. Mr. Chairman, as you know, you and the vice, the chairman of our audit committee, the Tennessee Division of State Audit, recently concluded its performance audit of MTSU and the five other locally governed higher education institution. Members of the board, Chairman Smith and trustee Delay, chair of our audit committee, they attended with me and my staff the herring that was held at the Capitol. This comprehensive review of our operation was conducted to comply with the state sunset law, which requires that each public entity to be audited at least once every eight years to determine whether it should continue, be reconstructed, or terminated. And I'm pleased, very pleased to report to you that based on the results of this audit, the Tennessee General Assembly Joint Subcommittee for Education, Health, and General Welfare voted unanimously to extend MTSU operation as a university through the year 2027. Not every university that went before that committee got the six-year extension. The audit was the first for MTSU since our governance, new governance structure. And as we, as you know, transitioned in 2017 from the TBR to our independent board. More importantly, we only had one finding related to an administrative process in preparing the Clary crime log. One finding among 20 or three, 23 major areas that they looked at. Now, this issue was discussed, this finding, early on with our auditors. And MTSU, again, under the leadership of our vice president for Business and Finance, Alan Thomas, they've already taken corrective actions to address that item. And we will begin to. begin to, and have reviewed our process in order to streamline the data being used for various reporting requirements. And I also want to thank our general counsel, who really managed that process for the last several years, Heidi Zimmerman, in working with the auditors. She did an incredible job. So we appreciate the star review of MTSU as a locally governed institution, as well as the observations that the auditors gave us on how we might further enhance and improve our operation. And personally, I think it confirms the excellent and responsible work by our faculty, staff, and administration in our service and our stakeholders, and it is a positive reflection of the governance of you as trustees of this institution. And it's actually listed as an audit of the board of trustees. You're responsible for the policymaking, you're responsible to make sure that this university runs efficiently and effectively, and to receive a report like this really is a reflection on the good work that you've done. Now, upcoming budget hearings. As in the past, we'll be attending the legislative budget hearings before the various legislative committees in the spring of 2021. We anticipate that the governor's budget will be released in late January, with the budget hearings soon to follow. We have not received any word from the Capitol or the executive branch yet about the budget, particularly in light of the economic conditions that we're dealing with. So I don't have anything to report in terms of what we might be facing, although, in this case, no news at this point is good news, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. I will, as always, continue to keep this board informed as additional information is released on our budget and our scheduled hearings. And then, I want to remind you that even with the many distractions due to the pandemic, our faculty continue to do outstanding work. A writing team of MTSU faculty led by your colleague, trustee Mary Martin, and including MTSU faculty Teresa Schmidt, Dovey Kimmons, and Tammy Jones, have had three chapters accepted in a new book focused on STEM education. Submitted to and by a very competitive process, these chapters were selected as part of the ATE and NASA Joint Commission on STEM Education nationally, dealing with the Future Project. ATE is, ATE is the Association of Teachers Education, and of course, NASA is our National Aeronautics and Space Administration. The three chapters will appear in the 2021 in the book entitled Cultivating Scientific Mindset in the Age of Inference. So our trustee and our colleague really deserve a round of applause and a compliment. Finally, I have put, Ms. Edgar's put at your desk, as you know, at our committee meeting a month or so ago, we updated you on the concerns we have regarding the UT Martin Methodist proposal. I want you to know that Chairman and I have been working behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, working very hard getting the information out to those policymakers about the impact that this proposal would have if it is approved by the legislature and the governor. We put together a talking point document that outlined some of the concerns and issues that this proposal would have. I wanted you to have that. Chairman and I worked on editing it, putting it together, so that if you are able to come in contact with any legislators, or if a question is asked about MTSU and what the impact it is, you have this information to go by. Finally, it is with mixed emotions that I let you know that two of our key administrators who have, they have informed me reluctantly, to me, that January 20th, 2021, they will be leaving our campus. First, Dr. Marion Wilson, Assistant to the President for Institutional Equity and Compliance. She's returning home, she is leaving to go back to her, to the East Coast. She's worked at this university for a number of years in a critical position that advises the president and serve as an important role university-wide in this area. Dr. Deb Sells will chair this committee and this important senior-level executive position at our university. And then, with great, great sadness, truly, 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 General Counsel Heidi Zimmerman has indicated her intent to retire from the university effective January 2021. And I personally would like to thank Heidi for her many years of extraordinary service, and I don't use that lightly. First, as General Counsel, and then over the past three years, as Secretary to this board. As you all know, this is a very critical position that advises the president and our board on legal matters, policy matters related to the operation of our university. Heidi worked at the Board of Regents when I was there. She's worked at the, formerly at the AG's office, and just brought a tremendous experience and historical knowledge about higher education, and we certainly will miss your service. I know you'll continue to be involved with the university, but let's give Heidi and Marion a round of applause for the great work. Mr. Alan Thomas will chair the search committee, and we'll keep you updated with regards to how that is going. And yes, this is final. Let me say again how much I appreciate the commitment of this board, your support of your university. We hope that you stay safe and healthy, and certainly with your families have a very, very restful, happy, healthy holiday. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of this board.
My closing remarks will be short, but first, I want to congratulate and thank all leadership and staff in getting through an unknown unknown to me. It was unknown pandemic, unknown what we would do, and I think we've come through with shining brilliance. I appreciate your leadership, because all the, none of the decisions were easy, and they all had consequences. Thank God we didn't pay any big price in consequences, but it was aggressive leadership that caused that to happen. I find it interesting that everybody I've met at MTSU, from visiting with all department heads on the first day till now, have a common goal where they're trying to get one more student a better life. I think the card that you got exemplifies the reason I give my time, because I want to help one more like that one. It's a great honor to be your chairman, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and keep all our students in your prayers, and we have a gung-ho new year. We're adjourned.